We're just looking at the meeting for August fourth, twenty twenty five to order. First order of business, pledge of allegiance, Charles, if you would please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got Becky, Tracy, Jennifer, and Mary Jane. Good. All right, is there a motion to add an agenda item for a brief discussion on peddling and soliciting? One second, one second. Let me put that in. There's seven A. All right, let me try your minds, all in favor? All right, all right, motion, please, thank you. All right, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in the public forum or anything on your agenda?
Did I?
Yeah, come on up now, come on up.
Jeff Hedberg, forty one Wall Cliffs Road. So I had sent an email actually to Matt regarding peddling and soliciting, which I'm finding to be more and more pervasive in town. And a problem where we have these people that are coming up your driveway to your front door uninvited. We had one that I then went to the police department to check and see if they did in fact have a permit. I'll back off a second. Well, no, I'll continue with that. The police department's answer to me was that we are directed by the town hall to approve these permits, so it's a town hall function, not police department function, but that then they will do a background check on the individuals to make sure that they're okay to come into your house. I think that this is a liability to the town. I think it's a disservice to the residents, basically inviting people to come on your property. I've got a list of different companies, if you will, that have come to our house in the last year. And as I said to Matt, I don't think this is the days any longer, the old Fuller Brushman or that type of thing, the people that are coming to your door. We had a situation last spring where my one first grade daughter had been dropped off early by the school bus. It was a substitute bus driver. She was dropped off fifteen, twenty minutes early at her house. Her mother hadn't gotten home yet because she was early. And five minutes before she got there, one of these solicitors was at the door. I think this time of year, you've got kids that are home during the day when their parents are working on vacation, whether they're middle school kids or, you know, a little bit older, still shouldn't be having people just show up at their door like this. I had, last year, I had an insurance salesman who found out somehow that I was turning sixty five and showed up on my driveway to sell me Medicare insurance. It's out of hand. And so one of my questions is if from a telemarketing standpoint, you can opt out if these people do come to the town for permits, is there a way for a resident to opt out? Because I think we're just asking for trouble. That's my.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
I'll retire to the back of the room.
You know this drill.
Yes.
We will be talking a little more on that seven A.
Yep, thank you.
Pete will also be waiting.
Appreciate you adding that.
No problem, Jeff. As I think most folks know, that peddling and soliciting is covered with one of the ordinances. Just point, yeah, the Fuller Brush salesman does not come around, or the encyclopedia.
Encyclopedia. I don't want to age myself.
We actually, my mother actually bought a set of those. Yeah. You tipped your hand with the Medicare tax, fellas.
Oh, I know.
Out of the bag, sorry.
Frankly, that was terrific, to somebody has access to that information, shows up at your house and says, hey, I understand you're turning sixty five next month.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Didn't bring your birthday present?
No, 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 just a quote.
We'll talk a little bit more. And I think the point's well taken. Times have changed. And there's, you know, from my perspective, when we were kids, we were out in the neighborhood, we were driving, riding our bikes everywhere across neighborhoods. That stuff doesn't happen anymore based on what's going on in our society.
Again, belabor it, but there's a lot of preying on elderly going on these days, too.
That's the.
And that's a whole other.
Anybody else in the public forum? Don't think we have anybody from the public on there. All right, item three, approval of minutes. And those would be the July twenty first, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Did I miss anything outstanding at that meeting? I don't think so.
Only a little.
Very nice. Outstanding. No comments or questions or suggested changes? There is a motion to approve in the second. Let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Item four. Assessor, Becky. Come on up. For that one, discuss and take possible action to award RFP number one dash twenty five, twenty six revaluation. Just Becky had actually teed this up for a week ago meeting, but based on at least one phone call that I got from a resident asking about process, how do we go about identifying this because there were some challenges with the last rebound in terms of factors and neighborhood codes and some stuff. While I don't think the total number of appeals was any more significant than previous ones, but there were a couple of things that Becky actually found, they found on their own after some queries come up. So it was, had to do with the process, how we, you know, how we were evaluating these vendors and not that it's an extensive evaluation because as Becky will tell you, we only have two respondents to the RFP. Floor is yours.
I would like to recommend equality for the, to accept the bid. It is higher. We are getting more for the extra ten thousand dollars. It includes doing all the photos again, which we paid twenty four thousand dollars last, for our last three battle cycle. It includes a second data mailer. It is our software company, so our camera system, our evaluation system, so you know, I anticipate it will go more smoothly with them. I spoke to many, many assessors for both companies. They have glowing recommendations for equality. I have never used them. I, I used Vision at my prior job. But everybody was happy who used them. And I, as Matt said, have had experience with the other company. I have been told that equality is great with the public, which I think is really important, especially if things go the way they're still going, we anticipate things are going to go up again. So I feel that's important. They're going to attach all of the data mailers to each individual parcel. Last time Paula scanned ten thousand data mailers so that we had them at our fingertips because they couldn't be, they weren't attached by the other company. So it's going to save a lot of time in the office. They did do our two thousand thirteen and two thousand seventeen revales, so that's.
How many solicitations went out and why did we only get two responses?
Those were the two that showed interest. I mean, it went out to the public. Vision, I don't believe uses is integrated with our camera software. I don't think they, so we couldn't get them. Last time, I believe we had Tyler, who didn't bid this time, so. But.
One of these, there are shortage of firms that do it, but also they have changed the revale cycles so that regions, basically your COGS, are all going to eventually be doing their revales on the same year. So for instance, the legislature in their infinite wisdom did this a couple of, several years ago. And so there are only four years between the upcoming revale and the previous one. Whereas the traditional window is five years. And the same thing will occur.
Sure, twenty nine, twenty twenty nine.
Three years afterwards, so.
We were one of three towns that got that. That's it, in the state. And Matt tried to, you know, maybe spread that out. Yeah, I said it's a, it's a huge cost for the town, you know?
And the purpose of that is to get everybody on the same year. Why do we have a third cost?
It's, it is, it is to create some kind of equity in terms of regions.
And everybody being the same year actually is problematic because you have such a limited.
It's, it's not, each of the nine cog regions will be in different years. Four, you know, four years, two for, or whatever, whatever works out. And that is, that is also to try to get greater value out of those companies that are actually there because there are some years where it's, it's loaded and people have difficulty getting, getting a revale done.
Well, I'm, I think, just logistically, in terms of, you know, you're doing a rebound Fairfield County and then if you gotta go all the way to the other corner of the state, if you're, you know, I think it's trying to, to try and keep the companies in one little area also to, again, to help with staffing and time and that kind of thing. But as to why Guilford got, you know, three and seven years, I can't tell you.
Just had to do with our cycle and what, as compared to the other municipalities in our area.
Our finance director did tell me, our wonderful finance director told me that we had three hundred eight, seven reserved for this. So we cover the cost at this point.
So the big part of the ten, the reason why you're okay with the ten thousand dollar additional cost, really two things, it's the quality of the work, but it's also efficiency for your office. Would you normally be looking at overtime?
Or no, it just, just luckily they squeeze it in with everything, but it just, you know, it's more to do in a shorter window of time.
Well, we also, we also now only have three in that department as opposed to four. So yes, there is an impact and we don't.
We don't know.
Yeah.
A question that isn't really related to the bid. Going to Matt's point about people understanding the process and so many people were surprised at the results last time. Is there a way for the public to understand or maybe for this company to make a presentation of some kind explaining the formulas that are used, you know, why are certain neighborhoods different? And what, what happens behind the scenes? What's the thought process that, you know, a human brain would go through if we were doing it manually? How does that get into the system? How do people understand that preferably before pan so that they know what to expect?
I, I'm sure, like I said, I've been told that this company is way better with public outreach. So I'm sure we could probably have some kind of a meeting or a session to try and explain it. It is a very complex process. I think it's very simple, but it's not.
I know it's not. But for people to not be taken by surprise because of something that's been built into a formula, which at some point was human direction. So it, I think it would be really helpful.
Yep.
As a taxpayer, I would like to know.
Yes, yeah, I, I think there was a lack of communication last time. And, and yes, explaining things with, especially in the informal hearing process. But again, like I said, I, I have heard that this company is much better with that. That was one of the, that was, that was a big, big piece of the puzzle there.
I'd like to make that as a formal request that we do something like that, you know, not necessarily to do with this vote today, but.
Yeah, offer, offer some kind of public meeting or some, something. Well, and also, I mean, there was that giant spike in housing prices that people sort of knew, but then the hard reality hit when they got the information. But I think that's going to be quite as much in these four years, but it's not going to go down.
Well, yeah, we kind of, we kind of, I, I talked to people who did from like twenty to twenty five and that's like the whole thing all in one big chunk. It was a significant increase. We did, you know, probably thirty.
Thirty, thirty-two percent.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we got a little chunk, but I had somebody who just did it, who said their residential went up ninety percent. So, I mean.
The value of their house.
Yeah. The, the total, the, the revale for their residential section, you know? So commercial went up forty and residential went up ninety.
Oh, you're talking about another town.
Town, yeah.
That's also another chance for us to remind people if your, if your revale doubles, that does not mean your taxes are double.
Correct.
People always.
Yes, yes, yes. So we could certainly do more public outreach. Especially, yes, that's what I mean. I was very concerned with that in this market about, yes, if people are understanding and the impact it's going to have on them and, you know, it's just not good that they don't know what's going on. We want to be transparent with everything, yes.
So if you would reach out to them, I'm sure there's a contract awaiting my signature somewhere in the office. Prior to giving that, would you confirm that they'd be willing to host at least one public session? And perhaps provide us with a primer that talks to the way the process is done, how, you know, in, in as simplistic a fashion as we can, that can develop would be, would be helpful. Thank you. And if they push back and suggest that that might change the price, let me know and I'll be happy to talk.
Thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the contract? Second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor? Item five. Recreation, Gary.
Good morning.
Take possible action to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty five Ford F one fifty hybrid off the state contract.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Been waiting for the summer.
Are you refreshed from your portion from weekend?
Well, no, not yet. I'm taking a week in August at some point. So yes, this is an approved capital fiscal twenty five project. This is, for instance, we have, we have four F five fifties and I have three F three fifties. So we have seven on the fleet. Tony has been, as he manages all his men throughout towns, driving around in a three fifty, a three fifty. So this is definitely to be more efficient. He did quote out two F one fifties, one being a regular gas and one being hybrid. The hybrid had a discount on it, which brought it only fifteen hundred dollars more than the regular vehicle. So we thought that it was much more efficient to go with a hybrid F one fifty. Maybe the numbers there. He also quoted out some additional items to make it more of a mobile office because he's, that's what he's doing throughout the day, not only managing, but also doing RFPs and quoting and getting in touch with different vendors. So I thought it was well equipped.
I also appreciate your transmission to us, talking about this as in alignment with the town's sustainability goals. So thank you for that. I have two things. Did you discuss with MJ or are you going to just find the money internally in your budget to have that extra?
So it's just on fourteen hundred.
And that's available?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the second one? The.
Tony might be online, I'm not sure if he made it. Oh, he is online, too, in case there's a question that I can answer.
I'm good, that's fine, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm just wondering, what is in a mobile office package that a person couldn't do with their phone when they needed to respond to something, but, you know, the office is a couple of miles away? I assume this is someone who's, the user of this vehicle was in the office.
Could be a couple of miles away or could be at Lakeview. Two, however, I'll let Aunt Tony, who's online, answer that.
Tony, good morning. Going to need to unmute, I think, Tony.
Why not?
Oh, no, what was that?
I don't think he's in the office a lot. He's, he's on the road a lot.
He's on the road a lot and he.
Even though he's the supervisor, he's.
And it is, it is hard on your phone too to be, you know, sending emails on your, on your little screen too. So he does do a lot of it when it gets back for lunchtime and he's actually in the office. But that's when he typically does a lot of his paperwork.
I don't think it's strictly electronic. I think there's a console in there.
Right, and he can turn.
Set up.
See if he's having trouble. Yeah, the mobile office package, I certainly could get back to you in detail.
Can you hear me?
There we go, Tony.
I apologize, I'm on my phone right now, so I was having trouble. Yeah, I think, I don't know who was talking because I had it blurred, but, yeah, it just has some options within the cab. Like it has places to plug in your laptop, so it gives you the extra outlets. It has a different center console, so you can put your laptop on it and be able to have like a workstation to be able to write stuff down and also use a laptop. It's just, you know, minor stuff like that that I think is worthwhile because I do a lot of my laptop work and everything outside of my office other than in the winter.
Also, since your wireless charging is part of that.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of like technology features that are added in, into the interior so that you can basically set up your office in there while you're on the road.
Hold off to the side.
Of course, of course. Yeah, no, no driving and sending emails.
I, I remembered my question. Sue also?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So, and it was related just to this. So this is, it's going to come off the lot and it's ready to go. There's no other modifications, adjustments that need to take place. You don't have to buy anything else?
No, everything in this package is fifty-one.
And the item right before, the item right before the mobile office actually is just some sort of appearance package, an X L T appearance package. I mean, is that sort of, are we stuck with that because that's the vehicle that's on the lot? Or is that negotiable? Is that something that the dealer's adding?
Tony?
No, that's, that's definitely negotiable. That was something that I had felt, let's see which one we're talking about here, because there was.
Eight hundred and twenty bucks.
Yeah, I'm trying to look.
Thing, I understand.
It says black appearance.
Yeah, so, so that was one thing that, in, this is my personal opinion, we can, we can definitely get rid of that. Is that basically, that adds running boards, which I think are important. We can always add those after and not from the factory. But it also takes away all of the chrome that comes standard and it, and it gives you like black bumpers. And in my opinion, with, with. What's that?
Somebody else in the background is talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I, I had felt over the years that if, you know, the chrome bumpers always rust so quick with the weather and everything else, and I feel like the painted bumpers are going to be a long-term fix. But that is absolutely an option. It is not something that we're, that we're stuck with.
I don't have a particular issue with that, that line item. I mean, I understand running boards, yeah.
Yeah, here in the notes too, it says running boards, body color adjustment, grill color change, black block.
We're going to be putting them on running boards on that anyway. This is, this is a truck. You need a running board to step up. At least I do with my, all my five eight.
All of my five foot.
All right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
No second?
Second.
Further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Thanks. Good luck, Tony. How long before delivery? What do they say?
Actually, the last time I talked to him, I think it was three months.
Wow. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
We get lots of accolades about wings and strings, but we'll say it one more time. Great.
Item six, that is appointments. And resignations, we have one, six dot one, act on a recommendation to accept a resignation from Mark Rossmann from the E D C effective August sixth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion? I'll move with appreciation and regret. Thank you, Mark.
The same sentiments.
All right, let me try your minds, all in favor? Item seven. Remove from the table and take possible action under question for Vista Life Innovations to use and place a sign on the green. Recycling fundraiser taking place October fifth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? There's something clarifying. The issue here was, is there somebody from Guilford sponsoring it? And I don't know that that's been adjusted. Who is the applicant? Someone from, what do we got?
It's Maureen who like that.
Who is a Guilford resident and a member of, and on the development team. Oh, she just used, she used her Madison Work address. Okay, that helps. Well, in that case, I'll move. And not to, not to quibble, but Yale no Haven is not a Guilford nonprofit either.
True.
And the Closer to Free ride utilizes the green as well. Although they have a significant facility here. Anyway, your point, there was no problem with the.
We required that of everybody. We felt we had to clear.
Ask the question.
Also, you know, on this one.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. In fact, that will be a couple of weeks out and it will be at Vista Life's Innovations graduation ceremony. This is one that takes place at the Cape every year for those who are moving up the ladder in the independent living spectrum. These guys are more heavily weighted a little further out, like Clinton, Westbrook, Old Sabrook, that area. Now, this will probably be, we took one year off for COVID, but I've been at that event every year. It's just really heartwarming to participate in, so. Okay, seven dot two. Act on a request for placement of animal statues on the green, assigned placement eight twenty nine to nine, nine seven, and then nine twelve to nine twenty one. As you can see, I think there were two different nonprofits benefiting from this one, from these two events. Foundation, hence the aforementioned Closer to Free.
I thought with this particular exhibit that we, we definitely saw one thing when we said that it, it, it needed to be under the auspices of raising money for a not-for-profit connected to Guilford or helping it. So that's fine. But I thought we had said, and maybe we haven't really specified this, that we were going to do it four times a year, like seasonally. One, one each season. We weren't giving specific dates, but one each season. So now we have two that are back to back. I'm not necessarily saying no to it, I'm just bringing it up.
I'll say that I, I do, I agree with that. I know we've talked about it.
We haven't formalized anything yet.
Yeah, we didn't formalize it, right?
Yeah, so we are becoming a little saturated.
So, I mean, maybe we say yes to these two because we haven't formalized it, but then going forward, come back to that guideline. Which I thought was very fair.
We want to put that in form of a motion, no?
And then this is absolutely, he unfortunately used the application for the winter holiday season, but he doesn't have to be, I don't think he has to fill it out again. It's giving us all the information that we need.
All right. So is there a motion to approve these two requests? But also adopt the policy that limits the utilization of this type of event to four times a year? I would do those as two separate, two separate motions, but as you've laid out, two separate motions. Okay. All right, so the first is the approval on seven duck two. And a second, try your minds, all in favor? Is there a motion to adopt a policy that we will allow for, for these types of demonstrations or play the use of the green throughout, throughout calendar year, quarterly or four a year? Well, what do you, this is just so we're clear. Nine months from now, we're looking at this. When you say these types, like what, what is it that we're limiting the four times a year? The placement of animal statues on the green for sale to benefit the local nonprofit. Now this.
I was going to say, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we may need to talk about this a little more because this is only one individual. But if they're. It should be more broad.
Maybe you need to talk to Peter.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we hold off on this?
Because it, it's one individual now, but that's one of the reasons we're looking at this because it could be other that isn't right now, but you never know, so I think.
Yeah, I mean, rather than actually setting a formal policy, I think a conversation with the applicant would be more appropriate. Let's let him volunteer to limit it to that, or we have to actually go into a formal policy about it. formal policy about it. Boy, do we switch people, actually, I mean, what do we do, hey, you can't do this.
And how does, how does this individual get the exclusive right to do it?
Right, yeah, I I think more of a conversation, ask him to limit it to four, or we might not be able to approve. Do not approve one all of a sudden, maybe we get the hit. But I think it's worth a conversation with the applicant first, before we start talking about ordinances or policies or something like that.
All right, seven dot three, act on requests from St. John's Church, place a sign on the green for their bluegrass festival taking place August twenty third, twenty twenty five, signed placement of eighty twenty five, eight twenty three, twenty five.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Seven dot A, uh, which is our discussion on the peddling ordinance. Uh, Pete, you're online. John, we'll get to you. John, I mean, Peter? I'm on mute.
I am, I'm here.
Excellent, excellent. Pete, let's uh, let's, I know, I know you may not have had a chance to fully research this, although you did do some some preliminary uh research on this. Um, is there anything that uh requires us to allow for uh peddling and soliciting uh as defined perhaps in state statutes uh that we have to allow it, but might have some control over it, or do we have full discretion relative to the regulation of scene?
Well, we do have some authority as a municipality, um, there are some constitutional limitations I alluded to and probably do a little more research on that. So even commercial speech has some protections uh under our free speech, you know, constitutional rights. Doesn't they, it does not have the same protection that religious and political speech has. Um, so there are things we can do and in our uh ordinance does some of them. Uh, taking a look at it, there's a couple of things that you could consider. And, you know, the test basically is, is there a, is there a state interest, which in our case means a municipal interest in protecting uh homeowners from certain types of speech? Any changes to our ordinance would have to be content neutral, like for instance, it can't be, hey, we don't like, you know, encyclopedia salesman, you know, solar, it would have to be uh neutral as to the content. But a couple of things that you could consider, and one would be um time limits on when solicitation could occur. And another one, which I'd want to look at a little more closely, but I think is available, is for people to post a no soliciting or no trespassing sign. Uh, and we could add that to our ordinance so that there would be a a civil fine if somebody breached that. And of course, you'd have to carve out, and that could be part of the ordinance, you'd have to carve out that it could not apply to non-commercial uh protected type of speech thing, so those are two things at least that, you know, you could consider. I guess that's all I have to offer now, and then I would do some more research on it.
General, I meant to kind of frame this whole thing, but the, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but the regulation in Guilford is not, we're not permitting this by our Guilford regulation. It's already permitted. Under state law, there's no, there's no restriction. So, yeah, this, well, I'm saying there's no law against it.
Right.
So therefore, it can be done. So both towns are allowed to make regulations to reduce it and limit it as much as we can without violating these constitutional issues. So we, it's not like we have a rule that allows it, which I think.
Yeah, it's not like it's, it's not lawful unless we allow it. Okay, it's lawful unless we disallow it.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then we have to be careful how far the disallowance goes, there's, it it can't be an out, what's very clear uh is that it cannot be an outright ban across the board for all residences. Now, what what's interesting is a particular resident, if they chose to can put that no soliciting um type of sign up, excuse me. And that may mean something right now if you do it. Because you always have, you know, the right to claim a criminal trespass on your property, but that it's hard to prove, it, you know, it's an unnecessary elevation of of the situation, but if you put that in an ordinance, then it's a civil penalty. And uh we can control what that actually means. And that it means particularly at what I think you folks are are looking at, which is the commercial solicitation of products door to door.
Which I do think we should restrict as much as we can, agreeing with all the points that were made. And also these days, I mean, it's just scary to think of somebody posing as a solar salesman, even though they're just casing your house or not, so. I think we should do whatever we can legally do. But we.
Yeah, I I just think you have to have something on the books so that, you know, God forbid, we do have a you know, an incident or something, we have something to pull back on that, you know. You have to have something on the books.
So you have a registration, you you have a kind of a registration process now or a signup process, but it's, you know, it's minor, it's not, it it's it's not going to keep people away from your door in itself.
Why don't we ask Peter to just research a little bit and expand what we have on the books now, back in something that we can discuss and move forward or whatever.
I'd be interested to know what the police chief thought about restrictions that we have posed and enforceability of what? I think the time window particularly makes a lot of sense, and that's relatively clear on how to do that, and that could be helpful, that could be a really helpful start. I hear you about the content neutral, that's a little trickier. And what does it mean if somebody puts a no solicitation, no trespassing sign up, and somebody comes in anyway? I mean, I'm interested to know what the.
That just gives them a stand to complain on.
I'm not suggesting it's a bad idea, I'm just trying to think through.
What do you think of requiring, you know, not only requiring a permit, but requiring the solicitor to carry some form of identification?
I think it's part of what I require.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
Yes. That that's permissible. And and to to Lewis's point, I would want to talk to the chief about the enforceability piece of this. That would be important.
Can't Peter come back to it?
We do have a process. It does delineate that you have to get a permit in order to do it, all right? Um, and when we, when we come to learn that they are not, in fact, uh permitted, there is action that can be taken, in fact, there was a letter uh from the police chief to uh Echo Shield Pest Solutions. Uh, uh, the permits were never retrieved, so they weren't carrying the permits with them like they were supposed to, and they were revoked. Uh, so, um, yeah, that that in and of itself is is an action, is an actionable item, and they and they took that path.
Straight, okay, that's that's the point. I I, it just needs to be practical, what what we're asking the police to do needs to be practical, and that's good to know. They've already got that. And Pete, I just want to sort of echo and make sure I'm understanding it, that everybody hears it again. This would not apply to religious speech, which can be, you know, blanketing sometimes, uh, but that we're constitutionally protected, right? And political speech, same same category, somebody wants a door knock, they're door knocking.
Yeah, yes. I mean, you could, you could try, but but I I think the, and and I'll look a little further, but I think the constitutional protections are are you know, stricter for that, or, you know, it it would subject the 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 regulations to a a higher level of scrutiny um than we want to get into. Um, we don't, you know, not trying to avoid work, but we don't want to be a test case for if we can help it. And it very clearly, the the ones that, yeah, I've at least informally seen so far, um, do do not try to go that far to restrict political and religious expression that way.
Pete, what do you, what do you, while you do your research, the idea Jeff had about an opt out. So if we were to set up a database uh where folks could actually sign up to opt out from all solicitation, it would have to be a blanket, we couldn't be, we 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 couldn't, I I I wouldn't entertain, you know, okay, you allow full of brush salesman, but not uh encyclopedia, it is in or out for door to door solicitation. That would be available to distribute to uh a company that pulls the permit.
Any vendor that pulls.
So any any vendor that pulls a permit uh would be forewarned not to uh not to go to those those particular houses by street address, et cetera. You know, this day and age, it's not too hard to put an app together to have people sign up for that, name and address, uh, and um, and then that is just a downloadable form or executable, uh, you know, an email uh to 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 the vendor uh as opposed to reading some paper, but um, Pete, is that something you'd think we would have any issue with?
Haven't seen it um in this day and age, maybe it is something that, you you know, um, could be considered. It it does, just cautionary, it does insert the town into the process. It's one thing to have people post their own private property, it's enough another for, excuse me, for the town to take responsibility to create a list and keep it updated uh and to distribute it, um, who would do that? You know, whose responsibility is that? Is that the police department? You you know, and then we have to well, I, there's a lot to that, um, I could look at that some more.
Given, given the limitations on what we can do to uh protect or to keep residents from having to uh receive these things and not sticking a no trespassing sign on their on their front lawn, um, which means that the neighborhood kids can't even come on the property, literally. Literally. Um, so.
Well, you say no soliciting, I mean, instead of no trespass, you know what I'm saying, so.
If a town did draw this up as an opt out, isn't that sort of going against the state law of allowing people to do this?
Uh, I would definitely leave that for Pete's interpretation, but.
The opt out couldn't be any, couldn't be any more exten, sorry, go ahead. The opt out couldn't be any more extensive than the no trespassing sign. You know, so they would have to be clear that when people sign up for this opt out list, they're opting out just of commercial uh solicitations. We could look at it some more.
I think it's something worth looking at, and quite honestly, the the V O C tools that we have, uh, I'd bet within uh half a day, the V O C team could come up with an application, it's just, it's just a signup. It's really pretty simple, um, so, yeah, we'll we'll take a look at that as well. Okay, we're good? All right.
Is it permissible for me to ask a question?
Uh, not typically not, but go ahead because you're you're.
All I was gonna ask is with this last one, you mentioned the Echo Shield Pest Control.
Yeah.
When they were at our homes, um, and we asked if they had a permit, and the guy said, um, yeah, we like coming to Guilford because they make it easy for us. So is there, are other towns doing anything different to address this?
Sir, Pete could certainly take a look on the, on his uh email, his email group, his user group, uh, on that.
Okay.
I'd be interested to know what other towns are doing.
All right, any further?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, your previous service.
Never know, I may, I may pop up again.
Former police commissioner.
There you go. That's right.
Have a good night.
You too, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, um, I guess committee reports with John. Even though you're not a committee, but little update, a little update on the uh.
Just a comment, I personally like the attack dog on premises, sorry.
Back in April, we um, we had reserved the green for the fan fan fest festival events to be held in October, uh, it was a tentative hold. Uh, one of the past most recent meetings of Board of Selectmen, there were some questions. I came up around parking and logistics and tent coverage. Uh, about a week ago, I had sent out it. Uh, I think I covered all the questions, but I'm happy to field any questions if there's anything else that wasn't explained in the email.
Just wanted to make sure I understood, it sounds like there's, this is how it sounds to me, there's going to be one large tent and that's where the attendance is restricted to, it's not going to be a fence around the green or anything like that.
Correct, it's a, it's a sited tent, uh, a little bit bigger than the the largest tent that was uh present for the craft fair. Um, it's going to be on the, on the west side of Green towards St. George, it's the only place it will fit. The tent vendor is the same vendor as the uh craft fair vendor, so he's very familiar with the green. We're familiar with them, uh, they have supplied uh information to uh fire department regarding uh the fire rating of the tent. Uh, Chief Shovis uh received that. There is liquor service that will be contained to the, inside the tent. Uh, attendees will have a um wristband if they're they're of age and they wish to buy. Uh, that vendor has been uh twenty seven years in Connecticut, is very familiar with our regulations and has filed uh the uh necessary application, if you will, or information to Chief Massey as well. Has he had a chance to weigh in at this point? Uh, I'm not sure if uh, Chief's on, I'm not sure if he wants to weigh in at this meeting or or next one, we have to uh we have to kind of solidify this thirty days ahead of the event, so we have some time, we got time, okay?
I'm here if you have a question.
Have uh, have you at all considered the request, the offer for serving of alcohol within the tent confines?
So I I reviewed uh what was presented to me, it appears that they're willing to comply with all of the normal restrictions that are in place. So I don't approve these events, I just have to review it and refer it to the Board of Selectmen.
And they supplied their um liquor permit license and their insurance certificate.
Is this the same company that we just had for Wings and Strings?
No, no, I don't believe it's.
No, oh, no, I thought you meant the tents. No, not the same.
It's called, I I raise the bar.
I don't know, that is part of the service.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, there was also one of Wings and Strings and I didn't know.
Right, that was the mobile lender, Flirty it's called.
Okay.
Different.
So you don't.
They did a very nice job, as a matter of fact, and at least the space was contained and managed and age age appropriate across the board. That was good, that's, it was well done.
There you go, more kudos.
Yeah, you can't avoid them. That's what happens.
So the way this event is described, I I think it sounds very well run, I wouldn't have any problem with this. It's if it was a Guilford nonprofit, because that's our rule, and I'm I'm just struggling with the fact that, I mean, our own form leads in, these regulations are adopted by the Board of Selectmen in the town of Guilford to govern the use of the green by Guilford nonprofit organizations for community events, and it's, that's three things that this isn't. So I I don't think that we should, I I think we should decide if we're going to allow this or not, and then we can, we can reserve the right to approve the details later if we decide to go ahead with it, but it's close, it's just two months away. Um, so I, and I'm I'm hung up on those three things, and I guess I'm not convinced that there are benefits to the event, to the town, I understand the impact on the merchants. There would also be a lot of positive impact if it was at the fairgrounds, it's not like this is all or nothing. So I'm stuck on that, might be the only one, but I feel like we should act or act on this one way or the other.
Okay, just quickly, as to the nonprofit status, uh, the Guilford Park Recreation is the is a sponsor of this application as well.
Which means what? What does that exactly mean?
Similar to what's being done, what was done for Wings and Strings.
I don't, I I don't think it is, because you ran Wings and Strings, I mean, the risk was on you if something went wrong. You were in charge of all the details, made all the arrangements, huge amount of work. Um, the risk and reward went to the town of Guilford. So to me, that's what's sponsored, or sponsoring could be if we decide, to me, I don't know. If we decided that we are going to sponsor the Pride event, that's our our saying, these are the. If we decided that we are going to sponsor the Pride event, that's our, our saying, these are the community values. I don't think that either of those things is happening here. So I don't, I don't know if there's more to the term sponsor than that.
So I guess, in my opinion, the co-sponsor comes with making some of the decisions about the event that, in those three or four days. So we are providing some of portable toilets. We're providing space in the community center. Jenny's asked that we maybe have some security on the green that night. That would, that I would be part of that solution that we're gonna work through. So some of the decision.
Renting some of the rooms at the community center as well.
And we were considering some food options that would have some revenue, revenue for the senior program. We're working through details with that. So that's how we got involved.
I guess the question in my mind too, because Susan's talking about is you just listed a number of things that we're doing for them. The question is why? I mean, are we saying that we're going to do these things for you because this event is bringing X, Y, Z benefits to the community? And if that's the case, what's the X, Y, Z?
So in my opinion or comment, the X, Y, Z is the rental properties that they come in and occupy. Airbnb's that they occupy in town. The income that goes to St. George Church for parking, the income that goes to the community center for room rental and food service and the benefit that the merchants experience in shops or restaurants. It throughout their schedule, which I provided to, they commented on, you know, places to eat, places to shop. And they're bringing their attendees to those stores and restaurants. Incidentally, Char Level should be open as well for this event. So we're gonna tie them in as well. And they're, they'll only be open about a month.
But it's an incredible benefit because people would still be staying in the Airbnb's and going to the restaurants if they have those at the fairgrounds.
Didn't we, didn't we, I mean, we haven't made a final decision on anything, but didn't we say that if we were to approve it, we would ask them to make, connect with a, with a nonprofit in Guilford and make a donation to them to legitimize it?
I, I don't remember that, but even if they did, I'm not seeing that.
That was, that was part of the discussion I can ask Jenny. Actually Jenny was gonna join us this morning, but she was on Hawaii time. So she is probably awake.
You had mentioned that they were willing to make a donation to, to a nonprofit. Was that St. George or was it?
I, I think it was the Ag Society.
The Ag Society?
Yeah, but I, I didn't, I didn't, I confirmed that with Jenny, but I will today.
What? Can you refresh my mind? Why is it they don't wanna be in the ag property?
I believe it was too tight for them.
It was more about logistics. So people having to walk from Ag Society, uh, fairgrounds to the green was, it was too much for a lot of people. So I think they most likely wouldn't have come back to Guilford had we not looked at the green. Because people, as much as they loved it, they felt disconnected from the shops and the, the center. And spending more time at the fairgrounds was just not as, as pleasurable as the heart of the, of the community. That's how I understood it.
If they weren't walking or driving.
I mean, that might be a driving subject on to me on my own, because I get, well, I wish it were different. And you know, I, I think, you know, working towards expanding access between the, the fairgrounds and downtown. Should be a goal. You know, there is a certain logic to that. People show up at the fairgrounds for an event and then if we want to get the benefits that you've described for the restaurants and the shop owners and everybody else that you described, I guess that's the driving force. I mean, I'm not in love with it, but I understand.
To that point, so the, the survey brought back comments along the following lines. The distance, but also the safety. Walking at night from the fairgrounds to the green. No cyborgs. You have to get, you have to actually get out to Whitfield Street. Alright, you gotta come out that way. And so somewhat of a dark area. And then going out through Lover's Lane. On a, on a good day, in the middle of the day, that's a dangerous place to walk, let alone walking at nighttime. So although ironically, I had a conversation with the Ag Society recently on another topic. And they were asking that if we would have the local traffic authority look at turning Lover's Lane into a one-way street. Thereby creating an opportunity to put the sidewalk in. Because, because blasting, blasting the bedrock that's right around that corner is, is not an option, really. So, but that's, that, that Charles' point was substantiated. That was one of the, that was one of the only criticisms, not criticisms, but challenges that the resident, the participants mentioned somewhat regularly, so.
I think the other thing, I, I've never had watched the show, but I actually watched it recently because I just thought I wanna familiarize, familiarize myself a little bit with this. The whole premise of that show is that it's always i- in town. It's, the action is taking place in the town. And I mean, we, we may not care about that, but that's kind of like, we are like, we look like that town.
I agree with all that, but I don't see that that impacts our decision-making process. I mean, we have to be prepared. We have, we've had people approach us about using the green or businesses using the green for something and we've said, we don't discuss it immediately. So.
Well, you know, the Guilford Arts Center hires somebody to come in and run that whole thing as well. Completely. Soup the nuts. They charge the vendors, et cetera, et cetera. It's not, they are not doing the planning. They're not doing any of that stuff. That is the outside vendor that they bring in.
How many days is it?
Three days. Starts Thursday night with a soft opening, a limited number of people. So it's not the full load of attendees Thursday night. Friday is the opening event and they wrap up on Sunday morning.
Similar duration to what the Guilford Arts Center, the Craft Festival in terms of time.
And the coverage, the coverage on the green for this event would be much less than the arts.
I do know of at least one vendor, one shop around the green who has figured out how to, how to capitalize on this to a very significant degree. I can't say anything further, but creativity on the part of some of our shopkeepers or storefronts is, because they, they see this as a huge opportunity. Anyway, and I appreciate your concerns as always. But do you wanna put this to a vote in terms of whether we're, whether we're gonna allow this use? Because I think we have to do it relatively soon. I had been sort of going along the path of.
I think we should vote today. I don't think anything that could come up, can, you have a position on this that is probably, there's nothing that's gonna come up in a month that's gonna make a change, right?
No, no. And I'm really glad to see all the work you did with it, coming forward with the details, because this is much more palatable to me. There being one tent, everybody can still walk their dogs all weekend.
Trying to, trying to make it.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that.
Low impact for the town and yet high impact for the businesses and the experience of the attendees.
How long have they been doing this event across, you know, the towns?
I believe this is their 10th year along that, along those lines.
And you said that you felt that if we didn't approve their use of the green, that they probably wouldn't do it.
They wouldn't do it here. They might do it somewhere else in Connecticut. They have done it in, with Trail County?
Yeah, a couple times, Trail County. Then they went up to Maine, I think, or New Hampshire or Maine. I don't, I don't know the reasons for them moving around as often as they have. You know, they, they, they may well be looking at someplace else next year. But, and I think, you know, we can, we can, if we do approve this usage, try to define what is a successful venture and what is not successful. And, and learn from it, inform whether or not we wanna continue with them, if they wanna stay here and go. I'd be kind of interested to, I'm sorry. I'm kinda interested if we know what percentage of the attendees are in fact local. She had some data on that.
Oh, I believe very small.
Yeah, it's a small number from Connecticut. Your fans are coming from across the world, Europe.
Which is good news, bad news to your point about having incoming people providing some economic activity, which is a good thing. But to Sue's point, it's not as much of a local event as the Arts Center, which feels like a local event that draws regionally, sure. But it sort of feels much more, much more plugged in. I, I, I don't know. I have a, you know, it is a close call. I appreciate how enjoyable this thing is. And it seems like there's a lot of joy associated with it, you know? It seems like a real positive thing and something that kind of bolsters us in a way that, that's, that's sort of helpful. And the, the issues about the fairground, it is different from a typical fairground event that takes place at one location down, down there that people just go at the car show or something, you know? That, that people just go and it makes really a ton of sense. This is almost by definition on foot. People are mingling around. There's stuff going on. It's a close call, but, but I'm, I, I, we don't have anything on the table yet, but I'm slightly toward approving it with, at the risk of opening some slippery slope problems that I think we can manage. I typically try not to let that argument necessarily sway me. If something's appropriate, it should happen. If it's not, it shouldn't. Try to take things on a case by case basis. That's how it's sort of made.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I think John pointing out the benefits to the merchants and then some financial benefit to the community center, maybe not a lot, but you know, everything helps. I think if we ever allowed this again for outside for-profit group, there'd always have to be some connection to it, town department, the way this is. And also I still would like to see some kind of a contribution. I mean, St., I'm, I'm happy that St. George is gonna get some money, but they're, they're giving something back. I, I'd like to see like a donation to something, maybe. I don't know what. It's something to maybe, maybe a donation to Park and Rec above whatever food you might sell. Because Park and Rec serves everybody in the community, you know, in one way or another. Some, something that we get back for this.
So this is a for-profit corporation. How many of these events do they put on a year?
One. No, no, they do, they do a cruise, I think. And that's, that's the two events that they do every year.
For, for this group?
For this group, yeah.
What, I, I'm not sure how many other events they do for other gatherings or groups like this.
They're an advertising and marketing firm. That's, that's their primary business. And it's a husband and wife team. It's, it's not, this isn't Mather's or one of the big, you know, big ad houses.
Oh, really? So this is not some corporate structure and some PR campaign and the whole, okay.
No, no.
That's been a wife and a couple of kids.
Yeah, and, and I did see them at the, at the fairgrounds last year. I was there a couple of times. They're, they're, they're setting stuff up. They're, you know, they're setting up the merchandise table. They're, you know, they're physically doing a lot of the work.
I was just wondering if, do we have any numbers of what income they do generate?
Uh, the ticket, the ticket sales alone is probably about a quarter of a million dollars.
Tickets, four hundred.
Four hundred dollars.
Five dollars.
Yeah, four hundred, four hundred bucks, six hundred, that's 240,000. That's real money. But, you know, they've got expenses though too.
Yeah, that's paid actors. Probably cover their transport as well.
Yeah. It's not my thing, but I have heard from.
But you could be a character, you could be a character in it.
Anyway, no, but I, I gotta say, the reaction I heard from the last event was very, very odd. There was substantial discussion and people thought it was a good thing, a nifty thing. And a lot of people were not aware of it at all. It was pretty neat, that type of thing. And it did bring a buzz to the community. On that note, you know, I guess I'm at the point where I would be willing to support it, but I would put it in my memory bank about, you know, looking for the negatives. So that this would be almost a test case. And I really, I really would like to see one of our goals is making a better interconnection to the fairgrounds so that we can make these types of events, a community event, easier with the logistics of it all. So, but I guess I would support this for a year. I'm not in love with it, but I do think there has been substantial. Be interesting to have heard from some of the shops. I mean, I know John's connected with them and everything, but if there was an outcry from restaurants and the shops that they had to have it, that would probably put me over the edge a little bit more, but I, I haven't heard enough against it to, to say no this year. My ears are tweaking.
All right, seems like we're getting close to the consensus on this, that this, and even Sue's coming a little, coming a little off the original position. So is there a motion to approve this use?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Further comments or questions? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Let's move forward and let's try to establish some way to evaluate how this whole event goes. And then also to, to look to see, to Sandy's point, if there is any largesse to a specific Guilford nonprofit or Guilford Food Bank or something to those effects. I don't wanna take money out of St. George's pocket if they were gonna give a donation to them beyond St. George getting the opportunity to have parking. Are they gonna, is St. George gonna charge for the parking?
Yes.
Okay. So they're just gonna open their lot and manage their own parking? Run it with these people?
Knights of Columbus who are gonna police it and, you know, issue parking permits and kind of put them in one section.
Maybe the, the section that the merchants don't use for their employees.
Yeah, because they keep the sidewalk.
One more comment I'd like to make to Susan's point that, you know, I can appreciate what you're saying, especially our guidelines for the use of the green. But, you know, renting the town is, is a living, growing plan or whatever. And, and I liken this a little bit to, I mean, I liken this opening up of, of the green to more unique events. A little bit like we've opened it up to the alcohol sale. I mean, in a highly controlled, or at least we try to control liquor now. We're up to what, two or three events that we go out and liquor there. And frankly, it's added to the event for some people, you know, for the community. And I see this as an expansion of the use. Maybe we're going to have to look at our guidelines and, you know, maybe we don't want it. I mean, all we have to do is have one of these go off the rails. Take it a step back, but I, I think, you know, these are different times now. We have to be, we have to be ready to make changes that are of some benefit. And we tiptoe through it in a controlled fashion, maybe we can control it.
Yeah, and just to comment to Lou's point, you know, where people are coming from for this event, you know, giving the town the exposure to people from other states, other countries.
Yeah, but you're almost digging yourself a hole. So we gotta tiptoe through that one.
Well, I mean.
I mean, when you start down at Airbnb, I mean, there are other communities that have gone the other direction. I, I think it's up to, worth exploring. You know, there's been some benefits. So let's make sure that the benefits far outweigh potential negative.
And, and Charles, that's, that's really good. I know we're past the vote, but we are living in an experience-based economy. We have our Economic Development Director here.
We have our economic development director here focusing this for us, and it's really appreciated, all the effort that's gone into trying to limit the problems that have been completely appropriately raised. And so, thank you for all, we, you guys come and you talk for twenty minutes. You're spending hours and hours and hours solving these problems, and that's, that's fantastic. But I mean, I do think this is the type of thing that benefits, that, that does benefit the entire community on balance. Uh, Charles' point until something goes wrong, but I think we try and head that off with some of this advanced work, which you've done, so, thanks.
I think this is a good group to work with as a test case too, because, I mean, they're, they, they just seem like a good, good bunch of people that came to town. I heard that comment several times from the, you know, from the side.
I heard a lot of positives last time, something that I was totally unaware of.
And that's one of the changes this year, we're trying to get out of the gate with this, with the schedule early and get that to the merchants so that they know.
So, so only positive question. If this had been John came to us and said, we wanna do this. I wanna do this because it fits in with our economic development programming methodologies or goals, et cetera, to drive more business for our downtown residents, would we have had a different discussion?
Do you mean if John was to put together the, yeah, it would have been.
Well, here, here's a shining example of that, the fortress. I mean, that, I can see that snowboard. I mean, I got a lot of positive feedback about that last year, and I think it's expanded and grown this year. And, and that's.
And Park and Rec has jumped into that one too.
It's like over fifty bands now.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, okay. I, 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 I don't, you know, I'm not the one that's gonna be participating in most of the stuff, but I do think as a vibrant community, these are things that we have to not be afraid of. Try, control as much as we can and hope that they work. And there's gonna be some that aren't gonna work.
You read the rules, that, that's an ordinance, is that an ordinance that you read?
It's not an ordinance. It's, it's, it's what we say on our form, and I don't know how.
Because I was wondering if, if we, not today, but I was wondering if we maybe, maybe after this, after we see how it goes, that we might put some kind of a, a part of a sentence in or something that says, from time to ta- from time to time with the selectman's discretion, a non, a, a, a for-profit agency may qualify to use the green or some, something, so, something so that we still have complete control over it, over yes or no. But, but then, then it doesn't feel like we're going, because right now, it's like we're kind of going against what we wrote, yes. So, I don't know whether that is a good, a good idea or a bad idea, just throw it out.
I thought, I thought we checked the third box by virtue of the involvement. That's how we sort of got around that pure obstruction of that. I, I don't wanna beat the death out of this. It's a close call and these are great points. I just kind of think it's a positive thing on balance and we're trying to make it work.
So, before, so this great discussion, I think for future, future planning, maybe a, a little bit of a shift, but if a for-profit organization came to, as they are here, and they wanted to open an event to, uh, the residents of town, you know? Then, then what would that mean? You know, that you'd have more people coming to the green on those days. And again, it helps the merchants, but, you know, we never know, we might, we might see that someday. Somebody approaches us and says, we wanna do something on the green. We'll have food, we'll have drink, we'll have music. Not to steal from your camp, but, um, you know, who knows, may come. Thank you.
Could probably check with Joel DeLanter, who can give us probably chapter and verse of the uses of the green dating back to the, the day that they actually established the green.
Fair and the green?
And I, and I bet, I bet. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we'll be all in profit in those days. I'd be, I'd be curious to see, you know?
They might have a store on the green.
And remember.
It was there in the first place.
The green is symbolic for the, it, its ability to attract people to come to it. To preclude that from happening is almost anathema to what it was intended to do for the community. Yes, we're a much different community than we were when there were, you know, three hundred people or three hundred residents or six hundred or a thousand residents, right? And then also, I'm old enough to, to remember the Guilford Fair being on the green, right? And the angst that that caused when they moved it to the Ag Society, right? People were up in arms. That's where it belongs, so it's where it's always been, yeah, yeah, right, um, so. Okay. Got through that. Yeah, Jane, on my notes. People don't, don't fear change if you're lost. That's one of the, one of the great lines that I've heard.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything on old business? New business?
Little league, uh, World Series? No, two to one.
I said the money.
Well done. Well, I'm sure they appreciate that.
So, they played, did they play two yesterday?
No, they just played one game.
Well, they're, they're, they're in double, it's double elimination. It is double elimination, so.
Terrific. Oh.
And it was two to one, so somebody, another, somebody pitched the other great game.
Great game, that's right.
Because along the way, they lost the game.
No, this is the next bracket.
Yeah, I know.
They, they, in the States, they lost their first game, got knocked into the loser's bracket and had to come all the way back out of the loser's bracket.
Yeah.
Because it's the double elimination. But in the, in the, in the regionals, they outscored their opponent something like thirty or something to two or three. They had, wow, yeah, they, they, they've got two really good pitchers.
So, the bottom line is they get to play another game, and if they win, then they're still in.
They keep playing, it's a double elimination, so. They get coming what they call coming out of the loser's bracket, which is a long path, you play more games.
Oh.
Which puts a little more stress on your pitching, usually, but that was softball. All right, uh, public forum, anyone wishing to address a board in public forum? Hearing, I just, you know, this, maybe this would be considered business. There's a gentleman on, uh, the upper right, Lee Bickley, who I met with last Friday. Uh, he's a retired, uh, military, USMC, um, had a storied, uh, career, uh, was a colonel, I think. Uh, did an awful lot of work in the, um, he, he was a career guy, got out, went back, uh, was working in private industry in the defense sector, uh, and then wound up working directly for the army again. Really a, a wonderful story. But he was in, uh, talking about the recently passed legislation about expanding, um, property tax exemption to military veterans and their families. So, this will be something that we're probably gonna have to take up as a policy. And it, the legislature was written, it's opt-in or opt-out, right? So, they, they didn't have the hutsba to say, we're doing this and everybody's gonna do it. You can make a decision locally, which apparently is their reaction to unfunded mandates, right? It's not a fund, it's not a mandate, um, but it has to do with exempting, um, in addition to the other veterans' benefits, exempting, uh, taxes on the land, up to two acres of land owned by an individual. So, um, I, I don't think it is a substantial risk, but it's something that we're probably gonna have to address as a policy. I do not wanna do it in a one-off fashion. I want this board to make a decision as it applies to everyone who might qualify as opposed to, like, you know, don't wanna find ourselves in the same situation we found ourselves with, people coming in and begging for their supper and us making individual decisions, so. So, I think we should probably do that at a, at a, at a macro level. Pete, you and I will be talking about that. Becky, Becky will be a part of that conversation as well, because I think she can help scope the impact, uh, in terms of how many folks may actually qualify.
They would pay no property tax?
Uh, they would pay, uh, no property tax on the land.
Oh.
It exempts, it exempts the land, right, up to two acres of land.
Okay.
So, um, and there's also a provision in there to extend that, uh, to survivors. But the qualifications, you have to be one hundred percent disabled, all right? For however the, the, the service folks, and there was some contention about that in previous legislation. Some folks thought they had a hundred percent, but there's, there's a very distinct definition of a hundred percent disabled. And I, we don't wanna be in the business of interpreting that, so. All right, anything else? Take the motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn?
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.